We'll call the meeting to order at 5:31. We have everyone in attendance except for Ms. Harvey, who is not with us this evening. Public comments. Pursuant to Board Policy Number 2350, public comment may be limited to three minutes per person. All speakers who would like to comment regarding a matter on the meeting agenda must submit a public comment card to the Board President or Recording Secretary prior to the point in the meeting at which the agenda item is called. All speakers who would like to comment regarding a matter not on the meeting agenda must submit a public comment card to the Board President or Recording Secretary prior to the point in the meeting for open forum on non-agenda items. Public comment cards are available at the information table at the rear of the boardroom, from the recording secretary, or online. None? We have no public comments, so we will adjourn to closed session.
Thank you for participating in today's meeting.
We'll reconvene to public session at 6:46. Roll call, we have everyone present with the exception of Ms. Harvey who is absent. Mr. Adams, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sir, all please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Adams. Okay, do I have motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, second.
Any discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Agenda is approved. We have no action to report out of closed session this evening. Public comment announcement pursuant to Board Policy Number 2350. Public comment may be limited to three minutes per person. All speakers who would like to comment regarding a matter on the meeting agenda must submit a public comment card to the Board President or Recording Secretary prior to the point in the meeting at which the agenda item is called. All speakers who would like to comment regarding a matter not on the meeting agenda must submit a public comment card to the Board President or Recording Secretary prior to the point in the meeting for open forum on non-agenda items. Public comment cards are available at the information table at the rear of the boardroom from the Recording Secretary or online. And we have a few public comments this evening. I'd like to start with Jacob Ignacio.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jacob Ignacio, a student of Professor Amica Dawn's political science class. I'm here to ask three questions for my research project. Number one, the board priorities are to prioritize enrollment and to increase enrollment to 11,400 by 2024. Has the school reached its enrollment goals? And number two being, what has the board done to increase enrollment? And number three, why is there no carpentry program? That's it.
If the board, would you like me to? So, thank you for the courage to come and ask questions of a board that can be a little bit intimidating, and I appreciate that you're doing research on how boards work. And so, your first question, have we reached our enrollment goal of 11,400 by 24? The short answer is no, and then I'm going to follow that up quickly with it's still 2023, so we have time to work, right? We are gaining in enrollment and our enrollments are looking up, and that's due to a lot of hard work from all the administrators, faculty, and classified professionals here at the college, and we're really doing a lot of things from increasing our advertisement, to opening more sections of classes, to streamlining our counseling and our special supports that we give students. So there's a lot of that that's going on simultaneously. So instead of doing one thing, we're trying to do a lot of things to make that successful. So I guess that answers one and two, right? What are we doing? And, and since this is a political science class, to understand how different bodies work, boards work at a very high level. And so what they do is they set the priority, and then they leave it, they, they provide the guidance and the resources, and then they leave it to the experts in the areas to carry out the actual plans. And so the board would never presume to tell Student Services, this is the program that you need to have or run, because the Student Services are in there every day, and the Student Services folks put together plans and share them with the board, and the board approves them, right? So it's a high level of supervision, same with all of the areas on campus. And so, so the question about what does the board do to help us reach our goals? They authorize the college, they authorize the plans, they provide authorization to the budget, which allows the college to spend in different areas in order to make things come to fruition. They also authorize and approve all hires, and they authorize and approve programs that come up through Curriculum Committee. So, with regard to your last question about carpentry, that's a great question. And what I would suggest is that you first have a conversation with the CTE deans and academic affairs, and maybe some faculty in the CTE areas to talk about, are there other people who have interest? Because when we initiate programs, that's a primarily rely matter. So in California, we have what's called 10 plus one, where faculty and the Academic Senate have primary input on to what happens. And so, creation of academic programs and the curriculum and all of those things are what's called a primarily rely issue. Hal Huntsman, would you raise your hand and wave? Meet our Academic Senate President, so he could talk to you about ways that programs get initiated and things like that. And administrators provide the support to what faculty recommend, and we've worked collaboratively to make those happen. But when, when it's new academic programming, that comes up through the Academic Senate and through our AP&amp;P Committee, which is basically our Curriculum Committee. So hopefully that answers your question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tamira Palmetto.
Good evening, President, Board members. It's been a little minute since I've talked to you. So I'm really excited because I've learned recently that there's an opportunity to provide timely care, which we provide to all of our students for all employees. So our student contract, which I think was approved at the last board meeting for about $300,000. If we increase or added to that contract by about $18,000, which is the healthcare cap for one full-time employee, we could actually cover all employees, which include adjunct, hourlies, and full-time. So for those that are underinsured or not insured at all, which include a lot of adjunct members, they would have access to the same kinds of telehealth services that our students do. So they would be able to call a doctor, get advice over the phone, have reduced prescription drug costs, things like that. And I know that that's something that, you know, isn't part of this contract, but we're looking to possibly negotiate that, and Human Resources is a way. I just wanted to make that, put that out there, because during the last recession, we did actually lose somebody. Alex Weber, who was an adjunct who had his hours cut dramatically in 10, 11 that academic year. And when everybody's hours were cut and there was nowhere to go, right? So you couldn't really add to your hours, and you couldn't really afford to go to a doctor, you couldn't even have gas in your car. And he got really, really, really sick. And he passed away at home. He didn't show up for his intercession classes, and we did a wellness check, and he had died from pneumonia and then a heart attack. If he had had the opportunity to pick up a phone and call a doctor before he got that sick, maybe get a reduced cost prescription, he might be here with us, still running the gamers program, the club that he started. He was in our physical sciences, he was a wonderful guy. And so this opportunity, it just, it does hit home for me on a personal level, and I'm very excited to bring that to you, and I hope that when it comes to you, you'll agree. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Cindy Hendricks.
Good evening, Drs. Lett and members of the board. I'm just here to second what Tamira said about offering timely care to our employees. As we all know, the under, lack of insurance is a big issue for a lot of people, not, not just at the school, but everywhere, but as part of supporting the AVC family, I think it's, would be a really good thing that the college could do. And so I'm asking that you show your support, demonstrate your support and commitment to members of the AVC, all AVC employees by providing this program.
Thank you. Mr. David Adams.
Good evening, David Adams, Professor of Business, President Zilette and Board of Trustees. My main job as a professor is both to teach as well as to enrich the life of my students. The students are the reason why I teach. To that end, I was pleased when President Zilette launched her initiative that emphasized two main mantras, to serve students and be kind. I'm here today to talk about the first initiative, serve students. Now let me be clear, I sincerely believe that administration truly cares about our amazing students, let me be clear about that. However, I believe both the board and administration should be aware of one area where this college has failed to adequately serve our students. I was recently made aware by one of my students that the AVC attendance policy is not listed in the current edition of the AVC Student Handbook. I referenced the AVC Student Handbook in my course syllabus when articulating the AVC attendance policies to my students. Therefore, based on my student, I went to the AVC website to look at the Student Handbook. What I found was alarming, truly alarming. Let me elaborate on some of the issues I have with the Student Handbook that is currently up on the AVC website, which is right up there. First one is glaring one is that the current handbook on the AVC website is for the 2018-2019 academic year. That means that AVC has neither updated nor posted its Student Handbook for six years, six years. How could this be? Earlier, AVC relaunched its school website. How could this have been missed during the website revision? This is especially concerning in light of the school's recent accreditation. Once I get over the initial shock of our antiquated Student Handbook, I decided to delve into our current handbook to see what specific information was being disseminated to our students. My alarm turned into pure disgust. First, the handbook showed pictures of buildings and their locations on campus, as you can see here, that are no longer in existence due to the construction on campus. Therefore, the pictures do not visually represent the physical campus that they attend. Second, on page three is a welcome message from former President Ed Knutson. How can students feel welcome when the welcome is from someone who isn't even currently employed at the institution? Then I traversed over to the Table of Contents to find the AVC attendance policy that my student referenced to me. According to this Table of Contents, students can find the attendance policy on page 27. However, when I went to page 27, the attendance policy, along with various other items in the Table of Contents, were not, were mysteriously absent, not there. So to summarize, our current AVC Student Handbook is six years old, provides visuals of the campus that no longer exist, provides a welcome message from the former president, and contains information that is either inaccurate, incorrect, or just flat out missing. At a minimum, I would expect administration to do the following. One, immediately remove the version of the Student Handbook from the website. And two, apologize both to students and all stakeholders for this error, and to be sincere in your apology. My mom's no longer with me, but I think of her every day, and my mom always taught me that when I was wrong, to do the following. Apologize, admit my mistake, and vow to do better next time. I look forward to hearing your response.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. And I'd like to call Ms. Tamira Palmetto back to the.
I thought it would be down a little bit, but it's for edunav. So hello again. It's for 1325, agenda item.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Are you back?
Oh, go, scoot.
Thank you. All right, 11.1, Presentation, Veterans Club Update, Ms. Ashley Chavez.
Good evening. Good evening, Board of Trustees, President Zilette, Ms. Patty. I would like to start off with a thank you for all of the support that we received from the Board of Trustees and our administration at our past Veterans Day event last week. It was pretty much standing room only, so we were really excited about that, and again, thank you, thank you again for your support. My name is Ashley Chavez, and I'm the Veteran Program Coordinator here on campus, and I'm here to provide a status update of our Veterans Resource Center. So that number's a little misleading. Currently, we are serving 229 students for the Fall 2023 Semester. We offer a variety of services in USO-style environment to assist in the success of our student, veteran, and military-related population. Our primary goal in the Veterans Resource Center is to connect veterans and their dependents with their federal and their state VA benefits, but I believe that we do so much more than that. We offer veteran peer mentoring through our partnership with the University of Michigan. We have veteran referral for homeless solutions and emergency aid through MHALA, Mental Health America Los Angeles, PATH, People Assisting the Homeless, and Vets for Veterans. We offer a safe space, a sanctuary, if you will, for students that suffer from PTS and anxiety. We have an extended computer lab where they can come in, enjoy, and do their homework. We offer refreshments and a lounge area where they can relax between their classes, and we host a variety of specialized events for them. And we host a variety of specialized events for them throughout the year. Next, please. So this is our certification data. These numbers are to date, as of today. The chapters that you see on the left-hand side are just abbreviated version of the different benefits that are offered. Chapter 30 is the Montgomery GI Bill. Everybody's pretty familiar with that one. Chapter 31 is our Veteran Readiness and Employment, which not only focuses on veteran education, but also finding them employment once they're done with school. Chapter 33 is our post 9/11. Chapter 35 is the Dependence Education Assistance, more for our military dependents. 1606 is the Reservist GI Bill and tuition assistance is offered for our active-duty personnel as well. Those numbers are to date because as, as our students and as our veterans and their dependents become eligible, they bring in their certification paperwork and we get them certified throughout the semester. Next slide, please. So this is a breakdown of students that are using both the federal and the state VA benefits. Right now, we're currently stating for Fall 2023 at 179 students. That's the number of students that we're serving with federal benefits. Whoever might not be familiar with the CalVet Tuition Fee Waiver, it is the veteran equivalent to the California Promise Grant. So that pays all of the tuition and mandatory fees for the veteran dependents. And again, as they come in as a veteran and their dependents are eligible for their benefits, those numbers, they raise throughout the year. So we are really excited. We are on track to beat our numbers from last year, both federal and at the state level. So currently, again, total students using benefits just for this semester alone at 229. Next slide, please. This is a breakdown of our past events that we've had, going all the way back to spring where we helped. We purchased a table at the Vets for Vets Community Dinner, hosted a graduation celebration for our veteran students, Memorial Day BBQ. We hosted 500 members of both the community and campus. We had our very first VRC orientation for both military veterans and their dependents to get them familiar with the VRC, their resources, showing them where to go to get their student IDs, showing them where the buildings are on campus and trying to get them used, used soon, giving them a warm welcome to campus. I participated in a Veterans Roundtable with our Congressman Mike Garcia in August. I was part of a lot of community members, just giving updates on what's affecting a lot of our students and the veterans in our community. Patriot Day Ceremony, MREs and branch birthdays sprinkled all throughout the semester, and most recently, our Veterans Day Lunch. Next slide, please. Again, just some pictures to support our outreach. So we are very, we're front and center. We participated in the summer boot camp that FYE hosted. That top right picture is a picture from the Veterans Roundtable from Congressman Mike Garcia's office. And we were honored to have him speak at our graduation celebration as well. Now, at this time, I would like to introduce the Veteran Club President, Nessa Geiler.
Thank you, Ashley, and good evening, Board of Trustees, President Zalat and Ms. Patty. I am Nessa Geiler. I am the President of the Veterans Club here at AVC. And as of now, oh, sorry. So as of now, our club consists of our seven officers and we are 25 club members strong and still growing. So here on the pictures, we have our officers and then. So this is our constitution for our club. Our constitution is to help all veterans in need and build camaraderie amongst our peers, as well as provide support to our local community and mentorship to the next generation of vets and dependents. So as well as the VRC, we also provide a small, well, a little group within the VRC, which is also a safe space for them to communicate with others and also have help throughout their educational journey. So these are some of our past events, including our clothing drive, grocery donation and wellness packages during spring of 2023. Then we also have our fall, our fall events, which included aiding in a donation fundraiser for Deputy Ryan Klinkenbumer's family, the pep rally, homecoming and the club trunk or treat for AVC's football team. And then our recent Veterans Day Lunch. And up at the top, we have our display from the trunk or treat where we won third place for, in the best trucks competition. Then as of what is coming up. So currently, we are having our Toys for Tots in the VRC. We have a donation box there and we are accepting donations at this time. We are collaborating with California State University Bakersfield Satellite Campus. They also have a donation bin there as well. Then we also are having, or being a part of, the Athletics Thanksgiving Dinner, which will be held at the Hellenic Center for anyone who does not have a place to go for Thanksgiving. They are all welcome to come eat, have a good time and talk amongst their peers. Then there is the Christmas Parade on In Lancaster Boulevard, which the Veterans Club will be a part of. We will be helping decorate the flow as well as being the actors, I guess you could say, on the float for a Christmas carol. Then upcoming in spring of 2024, we will be having a clothing and food drive for vets as well. So how do we benefit AVC? Well, we provide veterans, independents alike, with a safe place to support them throughout their educational journey. We also help each other and do everything we can to make sure that they know about the benefits about being a student at AVC. Through our past events, we have been able to contact many students that had no idea that they were able to use benefits or that we even had a Veterans Resource Center at all. We were able to branch out and help them know what they are able to do through being a student here at Antelope Valley College. Thank you. And questions?
Thank you. 11.2, Child and Family Education Update, Mr. Nate Dillon.
Hello, thanks for inviting me. We have been working on so many projects in social behavioral sciences that I really thought it would be important to shed some light to our wonderful board and anybody here, anybody watching on YouTube about some of the excellent work that our faculty and CFE are doing. We have just in CFE, an endless amount of projects going on, it seems like. And I really appreciate you all giving us some time to talk about them tonight. We have slides. I don't know. Oh, it just got up there. There it is. For a lot of people, all they know about CFE on our campus is our catalog description. And there's just so much going on underneath the hood that I thought it would be great to give an opportunity to our faculty to talk about some of the great things that they're doing. Without any further ado, I'll turn things over.
Hi, I'm Kim Barker. I'm the Department Chair for Child and Family Education and Education. Good evening, esteemed Board members, administration and colleagues. It is with great pleasure that I address you today, reflecting on the substantial progress and achievements of the past 16 months within our esteemed program. Working alongside such a dedicated and dynamic team has been a privilege. And I wish to express my sincere appreciation for the collaborative spirit that defines our collective efforts. I must take a moment to commend our esteemed leader, Dean Dillon, whose visionary leadership has been indispensable in steering our team through the complexities of the education and child and family education program. Dean Dillon's commitment to excellence has played a pivotal role in the successful creation, implementation and ongoing success of our program. I am truly fortunate to share this leadership journey with him. Dean Dillon and I assumed our roles during a period marked by new administrative changes and the enduring challenges posed by the COVID pandemic. Alongside our exceptional faculty and campus colleagues, we navigated these transitions with resilience, embracing both the difficulties and celebrations that accompany significant growth. Allow me to provide an overview of the strategic initiatives undertaken within our program over the last 16 months. In the inaugural month, we introduced a 24-unit fast-track program designed to support credential teachers in meeting the early childhood education requirements by August 2023, ensuring their continued eligibility for transitional kindergarten positions. Furthermore, we successfully secured a grant in collaboration with California State University Bakersfield to develop eight zero-textbook-cost ZTC courses, a noteworthy accomplishment that underscores our commitment to accessible education. Our dedication to student success is evident in the expansion of our mentor program facilitated through strategic partnerships with community services and local school districts. The addition of a new full-time faculty member has significantly contributed to the overall success and growth of our team. In pursuit of academic excellence, we embarked on a comprehensive revision of our catalog, introducing a new elementary education degree and three child and family education stackable certificates. Notably, we developed a certificate that aligns with the mandated parenting class requirements set forth by the California Family Court System. Our commitment to innovation is reflected in ongoing projects, including the development of two apprenticeship programs, the establishment of a resource room for students and the creation of a child development assessment demonstration lab. Furthermore, we are in the process of forming an education and child and family education outreach advisory board, extending a standing invitation to each of you to participate in. I would be remiss not to acknowledge the exemplary efforts of faculty members such as Jerry Baden, Kelly Thornton, Linda Brown, Etanya Clifford, Tamara Williams and Tiffany Thomas, who have devoted substantial time and expertise to ensure the alignment of our courses, including Peer Online Course Review, POCER, thereby enhancing the online experience for our students. I extend my heartfelt gratitude to each of you for your dedication to excellence and collaborative spirit. Together, we form a community committed to shaping a future of educational success for our students. Thank you to all of you for the privilege of sharing this journey with you. And while the achievement of our program, the achievements of our program are noteworthy, I must emphasize that working with this exceptional team has been the true highlight of my tenure as Chair. It is an honor I cherish and I am pleased to introduce to you Dr. Stephanie Peoples, a full-time CFE faculty member who can, whose contributions are integral to our team's success.
Hello. It's an honor to stand before you today as a professor of child and family education at Antelope Valley College. I'm here to share with you an exciting and innovative collaboration that we have undertaken with our local school districts, one that not only supports parents of Head Start program students, but also provides a transformative pathway for our AVC students towards a career in early childhood education. The Child and Family Education Department and the Palmdale School District Early Childhood Education Department maintain an MOU entitled "Developing a Partnership", which aims to support Head Start parents. This three-year plan is groundbreaking in that it extends fieldwork opportunities to our AVC students. This unprecedented collaboration is a testament to our commitment to not only serve our community, but also to empower our students to become the educators of tomorrow. As the Coordinator of the California Early Childhood Mentor Program, I have the privilege of maintaining close relationships with local mentor teachers. These dedicated professionals and early childhood educators play a pivotal role in supporting our AVC students during their fieldwork endeavors. The California Early Childhood Mentor Program focuses on building workforce capacity through reflective, interactive and in-depth study of leadership and mentoring skills. It provides relevant, inclusive, culturally responsive and equity-driven professional development through individual mentoring for our AVC students. Our department consistently collaborates with local school districts to extend opportunities at every level of education. One such initiative is our dual enrollment program, which allows high school students to experience a teacher pathway as early as their junior year. Courses like CFE 102, Child Growth and Development, and CFE 103, Child, Family and Community, are made available to these students. High school students can complete six units as dual enrollment, then seamlessly transfer to Antelope Valley College's Child, Family and Education Program to complete an additional six units and apply for an associate teacher certificate, an eventual transfer to a university of their choosing. The collaboration between Antelope Valley College and our local school districts represents our commitment to education, to community and student success. It's a testament to our dedication to providing our students with opportunities and pathways that lead to meaningful careers in early childhood education. We're excited about the future and this continued growth in partnership with CFE and our AVC team. It's now my honor to introduce you to the talented Dr. Alice Christ.
Hello, board. Nice to see you again tonight. My participation on behalf of ITS is to ensure that my colleagues here, wonderful colleagues, have the support they need to succeed with this grant. I might tell you a little bit about the Pop the Cap Grant, a zero-textbook-cost initiative. Sorry, Patty, I forgot to wind it to pass this one. So Pop the Cap, Pathways of Possibilities for Transforming Higher Education Curriculum Alignment Program. The objective is to increase affordability and accessibility in higher education using open educational resources. Okay, so no cost for the textbooks. This is a collaborative effort, as my colleague Kim mentioned, with Cal State University Bakersfield as the anchor university, AVC, Antelope Valley College, TAF College and Bakersfield College and Porterville College. The focus is of the Curriculum Alignment Program is to have a seamless community college pathway and transition to university coursework. As Kim mentioned, the idea is to develop eight OER courses for the eight cap courses. In addition to establish a cloud repository and contribute to a national repository, as many other colleges and universities have done with their OER projects. And of course, reduce textbook costs for students and improve student success. I've shared, and I apologize, we don't have this on our, but I've shared these numbers with the board. But basically, if you have, you know, if you're, the average cost for the CFE textbook, I went and did the research in the bookstore a couple of days ago, about $177. The max class size is 30, so it's about 5,000 that's saved per class. And it's significant if you think about the idea, excuse me. 200, if we converted 200 classes in our general program, that'd be a million dollars saved in our community that wouldn't be going to publishers. So the key takeaway for the Pop the Cap is that my colleagues seek to transform higher education through OER and fostering collaboration and enhanced affordability and accessibility. And the nice thing is that we're going to be able to tailor our curriculum to our community, directly to our community. Thank you very much. I would like to introduce my colleague, Adia Ariano.
Good evening, board, and good evening, Dr. Jennifer Zalat. As our department continues to grow and expand, our primary focus remains on our students. As our department continues to grow and expand, our primary focus remains on our students. Presently, we observe a 17% decline in teacher credentials this 2022 and 2023 year, which we anticipate will further increase. To address this gap, we're implementing two apprenticeship programs designed to close teacher shortage and ensure our students are compensated for their valuable time. The first initiative. There we go. The first initiative, ESAPS, It's Early Care and Education Pathways to Success, targets unemployed parents and other individuals, including incumbent center-based and Head Start workers. This apprenticeship program aims to provide opportunities for these individuals, facilitating their entry into the workforce. Additionally, our collaboration with the Center for Collaborative of Education focuses on increasing the number of teachers in high-demand pathways, specifically STEM education, early childhood education, and special education, with bilingual authorization across all credential types. This strategic approach aims to address shortages in crucial areas of education. In the field of early childhood education, our students engage in practicum experiences, that's our CFE 201 and CFE 202 course, each requiring a 64-hour observation in early childhood setting. Currently, these practicum hours are unpaid. Hosing a challenge for our students, the introduction of these apprenticeship programs is intended to alleviate this financial burden, providing support to our students as they fulfill the required hours. This initiative reflects our commitment to enhancing the students' experience and ensuring equitable compensation for their dedicated and hard work. With this and all programs that we have going on, we also, I want to introduce our Professor Gabby Portman, whom has been an instrumental part of our discussion in regards to our skilled certificate titled Site Supervisor. Her passion and willingness to integrate her courses and knowledge in the field of business for our site supervisor has made this journey a delight, and so it's a privilege to work here with everybody. And this is my first year of tenure that I completed today.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Gabby Portman, and as Adira was saying, I work for the Business and Computer Applications Department. And I've had the pleasure of being able to work with child and family education to develop different forms of curriculum, but specifically, we're working on the Site Supervisor Certificate. And one thing I really would like to talk about is the importance of collaborating across disciplines and higher education. From my experience, I enjoy the process. I feel like in today's rapidly evolving world, the importance of collaborating in disciplines and higher education cannot be overstated. When students and scholars of diverse backgrounds come together, a spectrum of perspectives and ideas come out. Again, this collaboration fosters creativity, innovation, critical thinking, and problem-solving abilities that are essential. So far, I've had the pleasure of collaborating across disciplines and divisions, and even working with an organization outside of Antelope Valley College to serve students and this fantastic institution. So far, I've collaborated, I apologize, with the Digital Media Faculty and the Arts and Humanities Division to develop a digital marketing certificate. I've also had the pleasure of working with representatives from the Los Angeles County, develop non-credit courses and a certificate of completion to better serve our community and students. So when child and family education and education faculty reached out to me with another opportunity to develop what sounds like an amazing, it's actually going to be a wonderful certificate to better serve students and really our community, I said yes. The Site Supervisor Certificate is, the purpose of the certificate will be to grow students who are in the child family care field into a management role. I hope to incorporate business, accounting, management, and other courses in my department to, again, grow these individuals into management roles in the child family field. But once again, interdisciplinary collaboration is essential in building meaningful, effective, and diverse programs that best equip and support students at this institution. And really, I am so proud of and to support our child and family education and education faculty, again, to serve students and this wonderful institution. Thank you so much, and I want to invite Kim Barker to finish up. Thank you.
May I have the last slide there? There we go. In summary, the education child and family education department is dedicated to empowering the next generation of educators. Through innovative curricula, collaborative learning environments, and a deep commitment to the holistic well-being of students of all ages, we foster the growth of compassionate, knowledgeable, and skilled professionals. Our mission is to shape a brighter, more inclusive future where every child thrives, families are supported, and communities are enriched through the transformative power of education. We thank you for your time today, and we're so proud to be on this journey with each of you.
Thank you. Consent agenda, do I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Action items 13.1, Approval of Resolution Number 23-24/4 of the Board of Trustees Regarding Compensation for Absence, Member of the Board of Trustees. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Any second?
Second.
Any discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes, thank you, Michael. 13.2, Approval of the Fiscal Year 2024-2025 Resolution Authorizing Continued Funding Application and the Continued Funding Application for California State Preschool Program. Do I have a motion? Any discussion?
Yes. This is the Continued Funding Application and Funding Application for California State Preschool Program. This is a million dollars. Is this affiliated with the program that we just heard a presentation on, Madam President? It is, okay. Thank you.
Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Action 13.2 passes. 13.3, Approval of Amendment Number One to the Contract Between County of Los Angeles and Antelope Valley Community College District for Out-of-Classroom Coordination Services. Do I have a motion? Any discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
13.4 to 13.7, All Deal with the Learning-Aligned Employment Program. Board, if you will allow, I'd like to chunk those four. If so, do I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion?
All right, yes. I take it these are intern programs? And some of the names of the companies or groups are like Hydroplane, Small Wonders Daycare and Preschool Incorporated, Viva Superhero Behavior, and Promison Child Care Solution. Are these startups or are they established businesses?
These are established businesses, sir, and the idea, because there's a variety, the idea is that our students receive paid internships, and those internships are subsidized through this program, and the internships are in their areas of study, and it's to encourage connections with potential employers, so that when they graduate and achieve their academic goal, then there's the potential for permanent position.
Thank you.
Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
13.8, Approval to Amend the Agreement with Wallace Family Eye Care Vision Services through December 31, 2024. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Madam President. Periodically, we approve these different agreements with medical facilities throughout the Antelope Valley, like dental care, eye care, physicals, et cetera. Would it be better if we had our own health center on this campus?
It would be incredibly expensive to employ specialists in all these areas. These are not general physicians. These are specialists. And so by allocating a chunk of funding, when they approach Student Services with emergency needs and things like that, we can subsidize or fund their visit to, if they need a specific eye exam, they can go to an eye doctor, not a general physician. So it's more specific than general healthcare.
Who refers these people to the specialty?
I'll let Dean Zimmerman speak to the process.
Thank you. It's a great question. We believe that for student health services, that our students pay a student services fee. Access to healthcare is one of the equitable issues in our community, so every student at Antelope Valley College can request and voucher to go see the eye doctor, dentist, in-person vision, and of course, you've already heard about timely care. Student will come in, they go to a specialist, as President Zella said, we will not be able to afford having a whole dental setup or eye exams and the ability for them to purchase eye glassware, depending on their prescription and what they might need. So any student can request it. They get it through their email, through Student Health Services, and they just make an appointment with the provider based on their availability.
Thank you.
Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. 13.9, Approval of Agreement Between Antelope Valley Union High School District, Kaiser Permanente, and Antelope Valley College for a Work-Based Learning for Students. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. 13.10, Approval of Assignment of Articulation Agreement Between the University of Phoenix Incorporated and Antelope Valley College is being acquired by 4-3 Education to amend the current affiliation agreement. Do I have a motion? Any discussion?
Yes, Madam President. From what I've read on this, University of Phoenix is going to be affiliated with the University of Idaho under that 4-3 education college, or whatever they're going to call it. I'm not sure, is the University of Phoenix a profit university? You know, Madam President, is it a profit?
They are a for-profit institution, but they are accredited, and what this agreement does is it allows all of their students, they study in a variety of locations, and this agreement allows their students to complete their precepting requirement through Antelope Valley College.
So the University of Phoenix, or whatever they're going to be called in the future, will accept AV credits, is that correct?
It essentially allows the students to complete that component here, yes. And this is just an extension of an existing component, so we already have this arrangement.
And this is for three years?
I don't recall off the top of my head what the terms are.
But wouldn't it be better to have them go through this transition before we choose to be affiliated with them?
We're already affiliated with them? This is just amending the current affiliation to include the new institution.
Okay.
Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. 13.11, Approval of Memorandum of Understanding between Bart's Altadona Community Health Center and Antelope Valley College for Internship Opportunities for Students. Do I have a motion?
Move. Second.
Any discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
13.12, Approval of Cooperative Agreement Number 23, Puente-CC-03, between the Regents of the University of California on behalf of the Puente Project and Antelope Valley College from July 1, 2023 through June 30 of 2026. Do I have a motion? Any discussion?
Yes, Madam President. My question is, how has this worked in the past?
Could you clarify your question for me, sir? When you say this, are you talking about the whole Puente program?
How has it benefited our students in the past to have this relationship?
So Dean Dwyer, would you please approach? And she's been working with the Puente program, and she can give you the summary.
The Puente program comes out of Berkeley. It's run by the UCs, and we have this program on campus, and it assists in retention and success. We have found that our Puente students are more successful, complete more units, and transfer.
So is it measured?
It is measured.
It's measured. Thank you.
Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. 13.13, Approval of 2023-2024 Athletic Spring Sports Schedules for Men and Women's Sports. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. 13.14, Approval of Academic Policies and Procedures, AP&amp;P Committees' Recommendations of Course Listing. Do I have a motion? Any discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. 13.15, Approval of Addendum Number One to the Agreement between Educating Students Together, Inc. and Antelope Valley College for Historically Black Colleges and Universities for Services. Do I have a motion? Any discussion?
Yes, Madam President. This involves $100,000, involves 35 students, seven chaperones. Is the money for this coming out of the student equity funds?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor? Motion passes. 13.16, Approval of Contract Between Edelman Broadcasting, Inc. and Antelope Valley Community College to Provide English-Spanish Radio Advertising in Support of Marketing Enrollment Efforts. This is a radio marketing contract. Do I have a motion? Any discussion?
Yes, Madam President. This contract is for $49,300, and I'm wondering, you know, since English is the predominant language on this campus, how are we going to benefit by having Spanish advertising when the people can't speak English in 10 classes?
So part of being a culturally competent and relevant institution is acknowledging that we serve our entire community, and there are many multilingual citizens in our county who would listen to Spanish radio and absolutely still be able to participate in English-speaking courses. And so one thing that we know to be true... And so one thing that we know to be true is that in certain cultures, the buy-in and support of the family is critical to a greater degree than in other cultures. And so by reaching the families of potential students, we broaden the community's awareness of our colleges and the services we offer. And we also let them know, people who are not English speakers, we make them aware of the services that we have for them as well. So as an open access institution, we absolutely, we advertise where most of our students are. And so these two contracts are for the heat and for El Padre. And I'll remind the board that sixty-three percent of our students are Hispanic Latinx. And so that's a lot of families that we want to be able to communicate with, regardless if Spanish is their only language.
Is this coming out of the student equity fund?
These advertising funds are co-mingled. And so some of them are dedicated for our CTE programs and come out of Carl Perkins funding, and then there's some other funding streams as well. So we've braided funding streams.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thirteen point seventeen, approval of amendment number one to services agreement with Beacon's Moving Solutions Incorporated. Do I have a motion? Any discussion?
Yes, this agreement with Beacon, I examined the agreement, I couldn't find any mention of money, and it says on the agreement, there's no fiscal impact. Now, we're going to hire somebody and it's not going to cost us, is that what it means?
Vice President Brouwer will explain.
Trustee Reeves, there will be a fiscal impact or financial impact. This is the approval that will allow us to use Beacons. This was competitively bid, and they were a qualified company to help with our moving needs so we can utilize them for our future projects going forward.
Okay.
They'll provide pricing at the time.
Thank you.
Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thirteen point eighteen, approval to extend the use of the Foundation for California Community Colleges Master Agreement with Premium Cafe LLC, doing business as Conex Ed. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thirteen point nineteen, approval to extend the Foundation for California Community Colleges Administrative Services Agreement with WW Ranger Incorporated. Do I have a motion? Any discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thirteen point twenty, approval to extend the Foundation for California Community Colleges Master Agreement with Innovative Educators, Inc. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thirteen point twenty-one, approval to extend the Foundation for California Community Colleges Master Agreement with Invo, Invo Learning. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thirteen point twenty-two, approval to utilize the California Multiple Award Schedule with Hewlett Packard for the purchase of IT goods and services. Do I have a motion? Any discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thirteen point twenty-three, approval to utilize the Peppham Cooperative Agreement with Apple, Inc. for the purchase of Apple Technology Products. Do I have a motion? Any discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thirteen point twenty-four, approval of correction to September eleventh, twenty twenty-three, Board Agenda Item fourteen point thirteen for CalNet. Do I have a motion? Any discussion?
Yes. Madam President, this involves three hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. This is correction. How did this happen that we get in this situation? Could you answer Mr. Vice President?
Yes, sir. So with this agenda item, there were a number of issues with the agenda item. One of them was that the prior contract, the expiring contract, was accidentally uploaded instead of the future contract that the board was supposed to approve. And then also AT&amp;T, one of the vendors that is providing hotspots, was left out of that. So those things went to the September Board, and so this is being submitted as a correction.
Thank you very much.
Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor? Thirteen point twenty-five, approval of one-year renewal agreement and order form with Edunav Incorporated for Degree Audit and Educational Planning Tools Subscription. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? And we do have one public comment card, Ms. Tamira Palmetta.
Hello again, board members, presidents, all right, everyone. So first of all, I just wanted to say the counselors were overwhelmingly grateful that you listened to them at the last board meeting when they brought forward their comments about Edunav. They were really surprised that it was the first time you'd heard from us. But we, so now I'm here to give you an update. So I just wanted to, one thing I noticed is that it says degree audit and planning tool. It is not an audit program, and as a matter of fact, that's part of the problem that we've had since the implementation of Edunav, is that every other college that uses it has a degree audit program like Degree Works that feeds into Edunav, which is a planning tool. So we've basically had the end user counseling working with Edunav for years, trying to help them scaffold in and create a planning tool, back build it into a degree audit tool. The, some of the, they've been incredibly responsive. We meet every week, go over issues, they are helpful, all of that is great. The system itself is a little glitchy, so sometimes you'll put in a student ID number and nothing will happen. It will say no student found, even though it's an existing student, or you'll try to change the plan, and it'll say, I can't do that right now, oops, it's our problem. So we're trying to work through why it keeps glitching in that way. One of the things that, well, a lot of things, we kind of implemented this with the end user. And really, for this program to be effective, everyone, every area that needs to be part of it, needs to be part of the implementation and the actual, what it does, right? So we need admissions and records, we need upfront evaluations, like from graduation, like this class means that, and you're not going to find this out six months before you graduate that that class isn't what you thought it was, right? We have to have curriculum involved. We need a full-time IT person. So the tech person who's been scribing our catalog into Edunav so that Edunav can make a plan, has been split all this time between being the tech person for the entire counseling department, which we're kind of robust, and then, you know, Edunav. So this person's been kind of like losing her mind for a while, and she got a transfer to ITS, which, you know, Michelle, I'm so sorry, you know, you thought you were out, but she's still the person that's getting tapped for Edunav. But we need a full-time person, an ITS person in curriculum, working with curriculum, working with admissions, working with counseling, that can scribe this thing, because the scribing needs to be updated constantly. It will, it just recently had a problem with psychology majors, and I'm working through a very short list where students were told to take both Math one fifteen and one sixteen, and we did have a student, oops, register for both. So, you know, I'm in touch with that student and I'm trying to get that corrected. But there are constant things that need to be done and updates. So thank you so much for listening. Thank you for, you know, doing the one-year contract so we can try to figure out what's next. And we look forward to working with you guys in terms of how to fix what we're doing now to make it effective, because we're the end user trying to make it effective, and we're working very hard to do this, and we have been for a very long time. But counseling can't do it alone. It's not, we just don't have control over all the different aspects that need to be, you know, functioning for this thing to work. So thank you so much, and be back with another update.
I do have a question, if you don't mind. Do you believe that the full-time IT person that you mentioned would be able to resolve the issues with Edunav? Or is this just, are we just attempting to fix the inevitable that may not be able to be fixed?
I'll be perfectly honest, this is a program, like many others, that can be effective, but it will never, ever work right unless we get all the parts implemented that need to be implemented, upfront evaluation and all that. Having a full-time ITS person will definitely help, because as issues come up, they might even catch issues before counseling catches it. We catch it when it's with a student and it's a problem, right? And then we put in a ticket, and then we have to talk about it and get it resolved, and on and on. If you have a full-time IT person just working on Edunav, they should be running tests all the time against what the catalog says and what the plan is telling a student to do. They should be checking each degree program and certificate, going through, you know, the plan has this listed as a requirement, but it's not actually current. They would be able to catch a lot of that. And they need to be housed in curriculum, because APNP, Curriculum Committee, there's so much happening all the time, right? Like degree programs change, prerequisites change, catalog rights change from year to year. So this is something where that person really needs to have, you know, their finger on the pulse of what's happening in curriculum, and they need to be tied to counseling, admissions, all of these different areas to really make it work. To be quite honest, you almost need a coordinator. You almost need somebody who would coordinate Edunav as the end user and pull from all these different departments where they could actively go to each person that's in charge of whatever needs to function and make it work. But having it housed in curriculum with a full-time ITS person would definitely be a huge help, for sure, because they could run tests just constantly, which we do in counseling, but we're doing that while we're meeting with students and we have other things, and a lot of times, we're finding errors as they're coming up with active students, which is not how we want to find errors. We want to be proactively finding errors, you know, ahead of time.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other discussion, board?
Yes, Madam President. I read the background material on this motion, and it said, two to three community colleges use this system. Two to three community colleges. You know how many community colleges there are in the state? So what are they using in lieu of this?
So there are a lot of programs out there, right? So like Degree Works, a lot of colleges, community colleges use Degree Works for their degree audit system, and that's actually what we need, is a degree audit system, right? A lot of the regulations that are coming out with Financial Agency Pause, like we have to have an audit system that's accurately telling students, you know, these are the classes that you need and are you taking the right classes? This was not designed for a community college system. A lot of universities have this program. It's a planning tool, and it's designed to work with a degree audit system. So the other community colleges that are using it, and it's mostly, I believe, in Riverside, and I think I saw something about Neanza, but I'm not sure if they're actually using it, they're using it in conjunction with an audit tool, and that's why it's more effective.
So we just started using it, is that correct?
No, no, we've had this thing roll, this is, yeah, okay, no, six years. This has been just a process and, yeah, yeah, anyway, no, I just can't, it's been a long time.
But there's been problems, right?
Yes, because of how we've implemented, to be perfectly honest.
And that's why it's up just for one-year renewal.
Yeah, because we want to try to make it work.
Get their act together.
We all want to try to make it work. Edunav is motivated.
What's the alternative if they don't?
A different system. So just getting a system that is a degree audit system. As counselors plan.
Are we thinking about that, just in case?
Counselors are coming up with a list. We have a working document where they are piling in different suggestions, but a lot of those suggestions, you know, when we're being perfectly honest with ourselves, it takes years and years to implement any program like this, even Degree Works, it would take years and years to implement it again if we brought it back. And it would, you know, all the parts that need to work need to be implemented at the same time. So if we just switch to a different system and we did the same thing like we did when we went from Degree Works to Edunav, we'd be in the same boat we are right now. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Tamira. And Degree Works, I believe we've tried to implement it maybe three times already, right? So this has been a process, it's been a long process, and this implementation, Tamira is absolutely correct. It's, the reason it didn't succeed previously is because it wasn't, the process wasn't handled correctly. There is engagement now, the vendor is engaged. We know there are certain deficiencies, we know we're going to need an internal resource, we'll advocate for that resource as well. So we're confident, once we address the process issues and put those resources in place, that the system will be successful.
Oh, they have one year to do it, right? One year.
And you know what? They made a lot of progress, and the way that they've been responsive, I think we're in a good, we're in a good place right now.
So if I may, this is a compliance issue. Students have to have their ed plans electronically available to them, so we can't shut off the tap on one program and turn it on on another. They, there has to be time for implementation. If we choose not to go with Edunav, which is, it's not off the table, if that choice is made, we also have to simultaneously run a plan for implementation. And so these are not, and part of the issue in this implementation is that it was, I think it was done, tried to be done in a hurry, and it was tried to implement it too quickly without the proper runway. And so, so we're going through, you know, thank you, Tamira, for the input, and thank you to the counselors for all the work that you've done all these years. Implementing a new program is a very difficult thing, and what you said is absolutely true. If all of the people, it's not just the end users that need to be consulted, it's every person who has input into the process along the way. And so as we go back and see if those things can be implemented properly, and they have a year to prove that they can make it happen, and they're the vendor, they're providing a service to us that we're paying them for, so they will either make it happen, or we will begin the process of exploring other options.
Vice President Brouwer, question for you. Do we have a plan to bring on the full-time IT person that can basically devote their time and effort to Edunav?
We have, we have options there, and, you know, whether it's an IT person or a coordinator, you know, we can definitely have those discussions and see what this, what the system needs. I'm in agreement that we do need someone.
The process, and it's in the process. I know it's been put in program review, and all new hires and new positions get considered through program review. It'll bubble up if it's a classified position, which it sounds like it is, and if it's a new position, then we will work collegially with the Classified Union President to bring that new position onboard, and then we'll begin the process. So there's processes, and they've already begun the process, because program reviews are due in two days, I believe, and so I'm sure that counseling has put this position in their program review. So all of the, the wheels are turning, and we'll march it through.
And do you think it would be possible for the board to have an update in six months while Edunav is doing that?
We can do that. We can do that.
Thank you.
Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thirteen point twenty-six, approval of field contract for services with Sierra School Equipment for Administration Building Workstations Removal and Installation with Catastrophic Events Funds. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thirteen point twenty-seven, approval project assignment amendment, PAA, to Beacon's Moving Solutions Incorporated for Administrative Services Emergency Move Project with Catastrophic Events Funds. Do I have a motion? Any discussion?
Yes, Madam President. I take it that around that period, February twenty twenty-four, the administration will be, administration building will be staffed again. Is that correct?
We are aiming for the beginning of next semester, so we're hoping by early January.
Thank you.
Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Board, yes, I'd like to chunk together. Ford, yes, um, I'd like to chunk together thirteen twenty-eight through thirteen thirty. They all have to do with Measure AB funds. Could I get a motion?
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, yes, Madam President. Thirteen point twenty-eight is Cedar Hall, uh, project involves thirty-nine thousand dollars. It has to do with structural, concrete and grading. And that's deja vu for me. I think we had a problem with, uh, concrete and grading before. Is, are we going to the what we went through before? Does anybody know?
This trustee Reeves is due to, um, the storm, Tropical Storm Hillary and, and the issues that it caused on site. So a lot of that, that grading and the concrete that had just been poured was impacted by that storm.
So it's not like a repeat of what we went through before. Oh, okay, thank you.
Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thirteen twenty-eight through thirteen thirty passes. All right, reports, Academic Senate, Mr. Howell Huntsman.
Good evening, trustees, Ms. McClure, Ms. Cook, President Zellet. Uh, I, as you would expect, faculty are very well engaged in the end of the semester. We're in our fourteenth week. And so we're busy helping students finish up the semester, uh, do all the projects, all the tests, all the things that we do at the end of the semester as usual. In addition, uh, we're doing, uh, really engaging in a lot of dialogue, uh, which I think is really been, been very healthy. It's one of my big, uh, sort of projects as Senate President to really foster better dialogue, which I think had been lessened, let's say, in the past. And I think we're, we're doing a good job getting better dialogue. Currently, we're engaging in really discussing online teaching modalities, uh, as well as faculty service areas. And, uh, at the request of the President, um, discussing diversity, equity and inclusion, uh, a glossary of terms. It's very, actually a very vigorous discussion, which is going to be ongoing, I, I can guarantee it. Um, related to that, uh, we are currently publishing a Senate newsletter, which has actually been very helpful and I think people really like it. And if, I invite the Board members, if you're interested in submitting an article for, uh, the Senate newsletter, I think the, the faculty would be happy to hear from you. And the deadline for the November issue is, uh, November twenty-sixth. But it comes out monthly, so if you don't miss that one, there'll be other opportunities. One other thing I wanted to mention in regard to an earlier question trustee Reeves, uh, that you asked about the advertising in Spanish. Uh, there is a new law that's been passed, uh, AB one zero nine six, which actually allows community colleges to offer instruction in languages other than English. So I, I would expect that not only are we doing the things that President Zellet suggested, but that we may be offering instruction in Spanish, possibly even other languages in the future, which is, uh, I think a positive thing for our community. concludes my report.
Thank you. All right, uh, Antelope Valley College Federation of Teachers, Dr. Jason Bowen.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, President Zellet, Patty McQuirr, uh, Bridgette Cook. First, I want to say that, uh, you know, just to the Board, thank you for approving, uh, the poker stipends to the faculty who, who completed the work that they agreed to do. Uh, I personally am exceptionally grateful, uh, for that. Uh, I'd also like to just express that I'm excited about, you know, the approval of thirteen eleven, approval of memorandum of understanding between Bart Saltadona Community, Health Center and Antelope Valley College for internship opportunities for students. I've had several students approach me and ask if I'm aware of any internship opportunities. And these internship opportunities, if they're completed by the students, that gives them a significant advantage at admissions to, for example, transferring to UCLA, et cetera. Now, so what, uh, I, so I'd like to close with a concern here. So I, you know, so the Faculty Union received, uh, a directive, so to speak, to direct all information requests to the General Counsel's Office. Um, this practice is misguided, ill-advised, and adds an unnecessary layer of bureaucracy to the grievance process. Not to mention, we believe it is, it is in violation of the faculty contract. More to the point, this practice impedes collaboration and problem solving at the lowest level. Uh, because all matters are sent up to legal. And when all matters are immediately sent up to legal, the matter is escalated from a zero to ten immediately. Where in the faculty contract, there's a statement that grievance matters should be resolved at the lowest possible level, I'm paraphrasing. Meaning that the Faculty Union engages with the appropriate administrator, uh, et cetera, to resolve the matter before it becomes escalated. But what we lose when we have legal involved, as we do, and we haven't always had legal involved. This particular practice, uh, for example, was implemented November second, twenty twenty. The, uh, Classified Union was chartered in nineteen eighty-nine and the Faculty Union a few years after that. So we've been able to resolve issues together without the involvement of legal or this practice of sending a matter directly up the chain to the highest levels, one of the highest levels that are college. But what we lose is we lose expertise. When we don't allow our administrators, deans, et cetera, to engage in the Faculty Union directly in, in, you know, where they're able to attempt to resolve a matter, then their expertise is lost and that's a huge waste. One of the more important things we lose is this. I've worked with the dean on an issue for several weeks that we're not working on any longer. So we're not, we're not speaking anymore. But when we solve a matter together, we can celebrate together. And that builds trust and relationships and respect. And so there, those that I have resolved matters with and that the union has resolved matters with. And when there's another issue, there's this impetus to get together to solve the problem and there's, it's not adversarial. So what I would like to encourage is that we make further attempts to resolve matters at the lowest level. Thank you.
Thank you. Fourteen point three, Antelope Valley College Federation of Classified Employees, Ms. Pamela Ford. Anyone? Thank you. All right. Fourteen point four, Confidential Management Supervisory Administrator Employees, Ashley Hawkins.
Good evening, Board. Um, as we approach the Thanksgiving holiday, CMSA would like to extend our warmest wishes to the entire ABC community. The season of giving reminds us of the importance of community, compassion and generosity, values that all run deep in the ABC spirit. We are thrilled about the upcoming presentation by Dolores Huerta, a legendary civil rights activist and co-founder of the United Farm Workers of America. This event organized by Dean Riley Dwyer, Director Vanessa Escobar and the entire Equity Team will resonate deeply with our students, staff, faculty and the wider community. We'd like to congratulate the Veterans Center and the President on a very successful Veteran, Veterans Day event and the growth of the program. Um, as we celebrate Thanksgiving, let us remember the importance of giving back, extending compassion and fostering a sense of community. Wishing you all a great holiday. Have a good night.
Thank you. Thirteen, fourteen point five, um, Associated Student Organizations, Steve Benitez.
Uh, good evening, Board of Trustees. Um, and, uh, is it Zellet, Patty McQuirr, isn't it? Um, where should I start? Um, so we had a very successful trunk or treat event. Um, we, uh, came along with our clubs, uh, that are organized. We have about nineteen clubs, adding six from, uh, the last two months. Um, on twenty-sixth of October, we had, uh, candy, we had games and over a hundred attendees. And, um, it was a very successful event. First time ever establishing maybe a parking electric tree at that large. Um, we're hoping to like seventy-five, but like a few hundred came by. So it was very successful, um, had a lot of, uh, praise and reports from advisors and faculty. I wanted to thank James Cassandra and the staff and, for helping us with, uh, um, some items, you know, like computer suns and waters, uh, for the day and facilities for, um, the table, chairs and, um, uh, sound system. Um, another thing, ASO has attended the California Community College Student Affairs Association, develop leadership skills and networking and to grow in, into, um, better leaders. We're looking into applying these said skills in our school. Um, even maybe, maybe down the line, maybe do, uh, maybe a few sessions for, uh, students interested in student leadership. Like I, for one, uh, enjoyed the Parliament procedures and the Brown Act, uh, sessions they had there. Uh, I never knew it could be so in-depth, uh, sixty pages, Robert rules, very interesting. So, um, ASO would be, uh, participating in encouraging students, um, the student body during the finals week, uh, next week. And, um, ASO would be preparing, um, some, uh, stress relief, uh, items to the Lancaster and Palmdale campus. So I'm very excited to visit Palmdale because I'm from East Palmdale. So like it's closer than the city and I volunteered to go and, you know, pass out, uh, stress relief items to students that are doing exams. Uh, for one, I actually have exams this week, so, um, it's a lot, though. Uh, ASO wants to meet where students, where they're at. So, um, another thing, um, ASO would be attending, um, or looking to foresee in, pending the Advocacy Academy on December the first and third, well, first to the third. It's going to be at the Riverside Convention Center. It will be an empowering event and it's actually the first time, um, the Student Council of California, um, Community Colleges is actually doing. So it's a first time event. Uh, th- this will pretty much, um, provide students in advocating change on their campus and in their communities. The Advocacy Assembly is not just for students interested in politics. Participants will learn strategies and influencing, influencing campus, uh, leaders and to, um, trustee board members, city council and legislators. So, um, I think, um, since ASO has grown to be a large cabinet, about sixteen members, uh, um, and adding a new center position, um, it's, uh, been, uh, challenging trying to get everyone on the trip, uh, especially if you're sitting sixteen and only maybe ten could go. Maybe the few five or six or want to go in and, you know, just, uh, figure out what they can do to impact this college. I think it's a, another chance and opportunity for them to actually learn, um, and be better at delegating or even sharpening the skills when it comes to like environments like this. So, um, uh, there's a, a hope that we could get, um, that approved and our paperwork ready to go. Um, besides that, um, I have nothing else to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Antelope Valley College Foundation, Ms. Diane Kniffle.
Diane is not here tonight, but I will put, I will be her stunt double and say that, uh, November is the month of Giving Tuesday. Every day in November is Giving Tuesday. So you can go to the Foundation's webpage and there's a portal there. You can choose to donate and we're doing something different. This year, you can choose to donate to our Basic Needs Program and also, um, another student, which other student program is it, Jill? There's another one. What, what was it? Oh, the pantry, yes. So our food pantry and basic needs. And so, um, uh, those are very popular. The, the ma- any gift that you give is matched by, uh, community partners. And so if you give five hundred dollars, it's going to become a thousand. So feel free to add a zero because it's going to, it's going to just really, uh, make these really robust programs. So, uh, I just wanted to make sure that announcement was out there.
Thank you, President. All right, Office of the President, your Jennifer.
Thank you. So there is so much to be grateful for this month. And I'm going to start out with some hot off the press enrollment numbers. We are fifty-seven days out until spring semester. And I hope that doesn't make you all panic like it does me because I still can't believe that we're in November. But last year, on this day of enrollment, there were nine hundred and thirty FTES from two thousand six hundred and sixteen students. This year, we have one thousand two hundred and fifty-four point three four FTES from three thousand four hundred and eight students. So our increase over last year is significant. In twenty twenty-one, enrollment began on T minus fifty-five and counting, fifty-five days out. So like, we can't compare yet to two years ago. But you can see that all of the efforts that I mentioned earlier, um, that everyone across the campus is doing to increase our enrollments and serve our students and community better are paying off. So thank you to everyone who is chipping in on that. And speaking of chipping in, it's the perfect punny segue. Terry Muller and Taylor Waters, two of our women golf, golf, uh, players, made state finals. And in the, uh, tradition of excellence that we have at Antelope Valley College, Taylor Waters today hit a hole in one. A hole in one. And the coach indicated that that may be a first time for that tournament. So for eighteen holes, she shot a eighty-two. I don't know about you guys, but I hate it when I shoot a eighty-two on eighteen holes of golf. I just, anyway, congratulations, Taylor, great job. And so, um, and congratulations to Coach Long, Longdano. So much to be thankful for. So I'll begin my prepared comments. Um, this past month, I've had the privilege to represent Antelope Valley College at several events, including the Hispanic Association of Colleges and Universities Annual Convention in Chicago. The event was entitled Bringing the Depart- uh, another event entitled Bringing the Department of Energy to the People at UC Riverside and also at a Workforce Development Forum at UCLA. At Haku, I sat on a president's panel and was able to share with emerging leaders the strategies we employ here to serve our students, each other and our community. And I'm proud to say that people all over the nation are walking around with little AV pins that say Viviendo el Sueño, Serve Students, ABC Serves. And they're, they're impressed with the paradigm shift at our college, that our strategic plan is not a master plan, it's a service plan. And it's something I'm very grateful that this community has embraced. At UC Riverside, I had the opportunity to deepen connections made at Haku with some Department of Energy representatives. At a luncheon for presidents and the Department of Energy representatives, ABC was one of four community colleges at the table. And I proudly shared how we connect with non-traditional students in significant ways that transform their careers and their lives. As you can imagine, they were intrigued at our unique baccalaureate offerings and surprised that students could get such a rich learning experience for such a reasonable price tag. The fact that we are connecting with emerging fields of clean energy and looking to, to the future proves our relevance to our community and our students. The Workforce Development Forum brought together industry and education leaders from LA County. And while ABC was the only community college in attendance, several of our industry partners were giving us a shout out for innovative programming and community connections. The organizer of the event, Mr. Kevin Harbor, he's the CEO of BizFed Institute, introduced me to the room after all of these shout outs. He said, well, the president's in the room. And I was able to make even more connections. I want the college to know, people see the service that we render and they're grateful and they give the college the recognition that it has earned. This is an exciting and an energizing time for Antelope Valley College, not just for us, but also for higher education. I, I'm reading a new book entitled The Great Upheaval: Higher Education's Past, Present and Uncertain Future. And it focuses its study on this critical time in higher ed, comparing this post-pandemic time to the turning point higher ed faced during the beginning of the Industrial Revolution. Higher ed had to transform or go the way of the dodo. You become a relic or you transform. Considering the emphasis on service and future-focused education, two major points consume my thoughts. One, what you did, what you look, where you look dictates what you see. You can see up on the board, the authors of the book use this example of Rubens vase. It's an optical illusion. The viewer can either see a black, a, a white vase or outline of, of two black faces. Both cannot be seen at the same time, for they require attention and focus. Intention, not just attention, but intention requires focus. Where is our focus at this point in time? Are we focused on being an institution of excellence? Are we focused on circling wagons to protect pre-COVID ways of working and interacting? Are we focused on service, looking to how this college gives to the community and to students? Are we focused on our own needs? Are we looking for ways to maximize service? Are we looking for ways to protect privilege? I challenge us all to pay attention to our speech in the next few days. What you talk about the most reveals your focus. And like Rubens vase, we can't see ourself and our community at the same time. We have the choice, this is the second thing that's consuming my thoughts, we have the choice to be transactional or transformational. In my varied meetings, I'm struck by the renewed conviction that we are at a pivotal decision point. In our planning, our growth, our culture, and our interactions, we are faced with the choice of continuing, continuing with the transactional model, this for that, or forging our way into a transformational model that revolution now, revolutionizes how we do higher education in the Antelope Valley. Transformation requires bravery. Transaction requires references to the past for how things have always been done. Transformation requires willingness to change for the greater good. Transaction requires attention to personal needs first, ensuring that past practice is protected before creativity or pursuit of excellence is considered. We know that words matter, so here's some clarity about transformation. True transformation will occur by applying strategic intent to better outcomes. The campus has chosen ABC Serves as a new strategic intent, and our work with achieving the dream alongside our accreditation QFE Project One will assist us in defining better outcomes. All we need to do is focus our, on our strategy and outcomes, and we will indeed make ABC a premier institution through true transformation. Last month, I shared that unity is a difficult, yet, yet worthwhile choice. I reiterate this again, and I challenge this community to pursue unity and excellence in the interest of public service and transformation. I know that there are transformational thinkers on this campus, we've heard from so many of them tonight, and I invite you to bring your voices to the fore as we apply our strategic intent to better outcomes and transform this institution. Thank you.
Hey, board members. Mr. Rivera?
Good evening, everyone. It's, it's exciting and a little crazy to think that our semester ends in just two weeks, and you can feel the tension in the air as all the professors are preparing for their exams, and the students are stressing about them. But I just wanted to extend a shout-out to the sports teams and those golf players that President highlighted. Congratulations to them and their seasons as they're completing. I know that the soccer team also went far. And then also want to congratulate ASO on their successful trunk-or-treat. I'm glad that the student body is doing well, and I've heard good things about the student body about this enrollment period. And I'd want to wish all the professors and students good luck in their upcoming finals, and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Anthony. Mr. Upland.
Yes, I think the, the idea of doing that program over at the Hellenic Center Thanksgiving or in an event is quite brilliant, quite needed, and I think it's a great idea. So, you're to be congratulated whoever came up with that, or who actually came up with that. That's really about it, and I think we're doing pretty well. Thank you.
Mr. Reeves.
First of all, I want to thank the Veterans Office for the great Veterans Lunch we had last week. It was great, and the speech by trustee Adams was great, too. And I want you to know that a lot of people in the veterans' community are aware of the great Veterans Office we have here at AV College. And finally, I want to wish everybody happy Thanksgiving. Don't eat too much. Thank you.
Mr. Adams?
I'd also like to thank Ashley for a wonderful Veterans Day luncheon. It was standing room only. I think in the future, we may have to look for a bigger venue for the number of folks that, that actually showed up for that event. It was just nice to be with veterans in a congenial atmosphere like that for an hour, and I think they all appreciated that. If you missed the Film Festival, the first annual new and revised and improved Antelope Valley College Independent Film Festival back in October, you missed some good movies. About twenty hours worth of feature films, as well as short films. I was impressed by the feature films, which came from a number of different countries, but more importantly, I was really impressed by the short films from ABC students. In fact, one of them, there was actually a couple horror short films done by ABC students, and one of them scared the spit out of me. I mean, it was, that director is gonna go on to big things in the film industry. I would like to make a report to the Board about our Board Scholarship, and again, I still think we're the only college board in the community college network that has its own scholarship for students that's funded only by the trustees, and I wanted to make a report that we have expended up to this point, twenty-five hundred dollars in, in scholarships, and this year, we will be doing another twenty-five hundred. So, we will have a total of five thousand dollars worth of scholarships by the end of this coming fiscal year, and that's a, that's a commitment of a thousand dollars for every one of us on the board, and I think everyone on the board should be proud that we are supporting the students in that way. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. I want to say to, and I think they're already, they've left, but that's okay, Mr. Dillon and Ms. Barker, the work that they, their team is doing for early childhood education as a TK twelve educator, can't say thank you enough, because in twenty-five, twenty-six, we are going to have mandated UPK, Universal Preschool, at all of our schools, and finding those educators to teach those classrooms is difficult. So, I love the role and the leadership that Antelope Valley Community College has taken to assist us in providing all of those teachers that we will be needing by that time. Dr. Zalit, continued thank yous for the work and the, the awareness that you continue to bring to Antelope Valley Community College, all your, your traveling and your speaking. I know you're, you're out and about quite a bit, even in our community, answering a lot of concerns and questions about our college, and it's wonderful. Thank you. And I, too, just want to say a happy Thanksgiving to everyone. I say, hey, eat a lot, so I enjoy it. If you're like me, I do turkey once a year, and it's like a big deal, get turkey. So, that's pretty much it for me this evening. Thank you for being here, and we will adjourn at eight twenty-nine.